Good afternoon. Welcome to our December 14, 2022 meeting. Before we convene the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council, we will begin with a meeting of the Assisted Housing Governing Board, and then we will do pledge and our invocation. We'll call to order the Assisted Housing Governing Board. Roll call.
Board member Ansari.
Here.
Board member DeCecio. Board member Garcia.
Here.
Board member Guardado.
Here.
Board member Maggard.
Here.
Board member O'Brien.
Here.
Board member Stark.
Here.
Board member Waring. Vice Chair Pastor.
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego.
Here. Thank you so much for joining us today. We'll begin with Resolution 215, and I'll turn to Board member Nygaard.
I motion to approve item three, Resolution 215.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Maggard.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Item four, another resolution. Board member Nygaard.
I motion to approve item four, Resolution 216.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll, uh, roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Maggard.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you so much to Board member Maggard for your service and to the entire board. We are adjourned with the Assisted Housing Governing Board, and now we will move to our formal meeting. But before we convene that, we'll have an invocation from Fire Chaplain Nick Petrucci.
Would you please pray with me? Gracious God, we thank you for this afternoon and this opportunity to come together to this city council meeting. Lord, I thank you for Mayor Gallegos and the city council members that have chosen to enter this arena to lead our city, Lord. Father, you know the things on the agenda that's coming up, Lord. I just pray for wisdom and discernment for those things. I pray for ears that can hear and just a heart that'll listen, Lord. I just pray for this whole meeting. I thank you for the, every city employee that works in the city of Phoenix. I just pray for them. I just pray that you just bless them, and I just thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon us, Lord. So just be with our first responders as they're out on the streets and put a hedge of protection around them and bless this meeting, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please remain standing, and I'll ask our Vice Mayor to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you to our chaplain and vice mayor. We'll now convene the formal meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Ansari.
Here.
Councilman DeCecio. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pastor.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here. Mario Barajas is with us to provide interpretation. Mario, would you introduce yourself?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Hello, my name is Mario Barajas, and I'll be serving as today's Spanish interpreter for the meeting. And I'll take a moment to introduce myself to our Spanish-speaking audience. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas, y voy a estar sirviéndoles como el intérprete de la habla hispana el día de hoy. Deseamos pedirles antemano, si es que van a estar dando un comentario público, por favor, hable despacio, con claridad, y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente, pause después de cada una o dos oraciones para que podamos interpretar lo que esté diciendo de la manera más completa posible. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances numbered G-7064, S-49240 through 49285, and resolutions 22088 through 22091.
Thank you. Will the city attorney please explain the role of public comment in the council meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items for public comment. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. City Code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules may lose the opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on boards and commissions?
Motion to approve Mayor and city councils' boards and commissions nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I believe we do not have any in-person swearing-ins today, but we want to thank all of our boards and commission members for their service to the city. The city council provides an advisory role on liquor licenses to the state of Arizona. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on liquor licenses?
Motion to approve items two through 25.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 26 through 99, except the following: Items 45, 50, 65, 67, 75, 76. Noting that, item 64 is continued to January 25, 2023, and excluding these items for virtual public comment: Items 45, 74, 75, and 83. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Vice Mayor, no other items are required to be taken out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Pastor.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to item 45, which is public comment on proposed changes to the memorandum of understanding submitted by authorized employee organizations. We'll open the public hearing. Today, we will not take a vote. It will just be a public hearing only. We'll begin the public hearing with virtual comments. First, Blanca Abarka, followed by Martha Avendano. All right, not hearing. We do have Martha? I'm sorry, do we have Blanca? We do. Blanca, the floor is yours. Blanca?
Si, me escucha?
Hear me.
Okay, si. Mi nombre, bueno, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Blanca Abarka. Soy residente del sur de Phoenix.
Good afternoon. My name is Blanca Abarka, and I am a resident of South Phoenix. Y quiero comentar esto. Toda organización que es del dominio público necesita ser transparente. What I do want to say is that every domain, they need to be transparent. Y dar un reporte a la comunidad en sus gastos, porque como comunidad nosotros sí pagamos impuestos. And they should be giving a report out regarding the expenses that are being dispersed, because we are taxpayers. Se pretende dar un presupuesto de la ciudad al departamento de policía cuando no hay confianza en la policía, y a veces ellos ni siquiera saben lo que están haciendo. And supposedly, there's a budget that should be authorized for the police department, but there is no trust in them. They don't even, many times, they don't know what they're doing. Necesitamos ser parte y saber de la negociación del contrato entre la ciudad y el sindicato de la policía. There needs to be transparency. We need to be part of those meetings and arrangements that are going on between the police department and the city. Se supone que la policía está encargada de proteger a la comunidad. Supposedly, the police is in charge of protecting the community. Pero si la ciudad y el departamento de la policía no están haciendo transparente en estos procesos, pues mi pregunta es la siguiente: ¿Qué está pasando? So if the city and the police department are not being transparent in this process, so my question is, what is happening? Entonces, y les dejo con esa pregunta. Como comunidad y residente de una comunidad, ¿qué está pasando? Se los dejo así. So I'll just leave you with that question. Being me, a resident, so what's happening between the city and the police department? Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. We next, continuing with virtual. Martha?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
May I ask Lori to explain the process of what's happening today?
And we have four more comments, so we could do that after...
Sounds good. Thank you.
Perfect. Martha Proxima, and then in-person Rebecca.
Me escucha?
Si, señora Martha. Adelante.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Martha. Yo pertenezco al distrito 7 de Phoenix, y en esta ocasión solo estoy llamando porque... El presupuesto que está presentando la policía, nadie nos había dicho que había un presupuesto para hoy. Nosotros no hemos podido saber qué es lo que están pidiendo ustedes, y no es justo que la policía se le vaya a otorgar esa cantidad de dinero a la policía cuando ni siquiera a la comunidad le han tomado a parecer lo que ellos están pidiendo. No se me hace justo que esté pidiendo tanto dinero, y nosotros no sabemos en qué lo van a invertir o cómo lo están pidiendo. La policía no está siendo transparente al no dejarnos mirar cuál es su presupuesto, qué es lo que están pidiendo ellos.
Gracias.
So... Good afternoon. My name is Martha, and I live in District 7 in Phoenix. And on this occasion, I'm calling because I want to talk about the police budget. Nobody knew what they were asking for. We don't know what amount of money is it that they're asking for. They didn't tell the community. So I just don't think that it's fair that they're asking for so much money and that they're going to be investing in such and such things. So I just believe that the police is not being transparent.
Yeah, Martha, tienes más? Okay. Rebecca, followed by Ben.
I would just like to say that the person that was just speaking in Spanish, there was so much more nuance and detail to what she said that wasn't translated, and I just want to point out how unacceptable it is that what she said hasn't been fully conveyed. My name is Rebecca Denis. I live in District 7, and I'm here because I'm angry. The Phoenix Police MOU negotiations have historically been a closed and publicly inaccessible process. The community gets one chance every year to make comments about the first draft proposed and the only draft we have access to until it gets voted on in the spring. This year, we aren't even being given that. My first thought is that either PLE and the city have something to hide, and/or after years of community asking for more transparency input and access to the process, the city has decided that they truly do not even care to try and pretend like they value the community's concerns and interests. We don't get a chance to see any of the changes and assess whether they will be helpful or harmful. It feels extremely awkward opposing a proposal that I didn't even have access to review. You have taken away our opportunity and right to give feedback about policies that impact our lives, policies that can result in harm and death, leaving lives ruined with grief and trauma. We need and deserve to know about any changes to current policies and how our money, the public's tax dollars, will be spent. The Phoenix Police Department, one of an estimated 30 departments, according to the city website, received about 40% of the funds from the 2022-2023 general budget. They received raises and bonuses as well, despite the fact that there has been no action to hold the department accountable for the many issues and corruption that plague it, and while it's under investigation by the Department of Justice. The police chief is quoted by the mayor and city manager to be collaborative with communities and progressive. This is the opposite of that statement. Since I can't respond directly to the missing proposal, I will give general demands. No more negotiations behind closed doors. The process needs to be transparent and accountable to the public. No more increased funding to cops, especially after they've received millions of dollars for increased salaries this past year. No contract changes that will give PLE more power or give officers more protections to shield them from accountability. I'm here to call out the hypocrisy of the Phoenix Police Department, the city manager, the mayor, and the city council members for allowing this after years of consistently saying you value community input. PLE has no obligation to the city or its constituents, but you all, as the leaders and representatives of this city, you do. You all could have made it possible and set the expectation that the proposed MOU... I'm not going to stop talking. Needed to be provided and posted at least...
Thank you. Next is Ben, followed by Chaz. And for our staff, do we have any additional speakers besides those? Okay, the staff has said those will be our two final. Thank you.
My name is Ben Loughlin. I live in District 4. I'm here today in person because of how messed up it is that Phoenix residents aren't getting a chance to review the proposed PLE contract. PLE is not like other unions. Their members have the authority to harm, incarcerate, and kill community members, and we have a right to give feedback on what kind of protections, pay, and benefits they get. In 2021, dozens of us showed up to tell you that the pay raise you wanted to give police for accountability practices was nothing but a meaningless bribe. Y'all hated that, swore it wasn't true, and passed the contract anyways. Now, a year and a half later, we're standing here with significantly less accountability for members of PLE than we had in 2021. Shame on y'all for letting this happen. I don't understand how this isn't a violation of City Charter Section 2-218. It specifically says employee organizations shall submit, shall, shall, submit their proposed MOU in writing, and a copy of it became, a copy of it becomes a matter of public record. In Section D, it says city council shall provide on its agenda an opportunity for public comment on the proposals. How can we comment on something we can't see? There is another clear, this is another clear choice by leadership of this city to protect and prioritize the well-being of police over every other person in this city. It also makes clear that y'all aren't actually interested in community input or police accountability. PLE should not be able to move forward in their negotiation process until a community has a chance to review and comment on their proposal.
Thank you. Chaz.
Tlazo Kamati. My name is Chaz Alazar, and I'm from South Phoenix. I oppose item number 45, particularly as it relates to the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association in the matter of contract negotiations. A contract is an agreement between multiple people, but for that agreement to be valid, fair, and equitable, every person involved in the agreement needs to know what's in the terms of the agreement to actually know what each person is agreeing to. Otherwise, there's no consent to the agreement. The people of the city of Phoenix need to know what's being negotiated and discussed in the agreement between the people of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. We cannot consent to a contract that we aren't given access to. So clearly, transparency is the beginning of trust here. Tlazo Kamati.
Thank you. And I'll just ask the clerk's office to check for additional cards.
Mayor, we do not have any additional speakers at this time.
Can we check with the staff in back if they have gotten any? Okay, Senator Hernandez.
My name is Anna Hernandez, resident District 4, also Senator-elect for LD24. The fact that we have to come and speak to something that we have not seen is not only ridiculous, but is unacceptable. And the fact that this council and elected leaders, especially you, Mayor, is allowing and enabling the behavior from PLE to remain in secrecy is blatant slap in the face to families like mine that have less loved ones to police violence. These contracts are personal to us because we deserve to know what measures of accountability are going to be put in place for this police department, a police department that is still under federal investigation for the violence and patterns of practice. The fact, to Ben's point, two years ago, Mayor, you championed PLE for their accountability measures that included a raise in their contract. Now, two years later, we are being shut out from knowing what those changes even are. This clearly shows a lack on your part of compassion for the residents of the city and for the families like mine, and for any person that has had a violent encounter with Phoenix PD. I would urge you to really listen to the community if you really want to be the person, the progressive champion that you claim to be. Lives are on the line, and the fact that we do not have transparency on what those contracts entail is ridiculous and unacceptable of you specifically as a leader. Are you on my time?
Close the public hearing, and we'll turn to our Assistant City Manager to answer Councilmember Garcia's question.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Garcia. To answer your question, the reason we're here today is because the City Code outlines the meet and confer process, which does indicate that by December 1st, each meet and confer group, which are the five unions that we negotiate with, shall submit their proposed MOUs in writing to the city and file a copy with the city clerk. What was submitted this year and was on last week's December 7th formal agenda were letters from each of the five groups indicating their intent to negotiate with us in this next meet and confer process, but they did not, none of the five of them, including PLE, but others as well, submitted their MOUs alongside that with proposed changes. Therefore, we do not have any MOUs to share with the public today to comment on. That is the opportunity that is before you today, is an opportunity for the public to comment on those MOUs. However, we have not received any MOUs to be able to share.
Councilmember Garcia?
Well, will there be other points whenever those MOUs? At some point, do folks have to turn them in? Or is there going to be another point, if not today, for people to see what's in, what's being proposed?
Mayor, members of the council, there are other points in the process where there will be discussions publicly about points of contention between the city and the labor unions if we get to a point of disagreement. After impasse, there will be a fact-finding process as well as an opportunity for both management as well as the unions at that point to present points of contention with, in front of the city council, and also an opportunity for public comment at that time. Ultimately, the final contracts are presented to the city council for review and approval.
And so the intent of the process that we're going through today does not force any of the labor groups to, or police, or anyone, to give anything today? Is that correct?
The intent of the City Code is for each of the groups to present their MOU at this point in the process today. However, they have elected not to do so.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
There's two or three things that I want to ask. What is the timeline? Today, we're, right now, is one point. And then what is the timeline? Or can we produce or provide the timeline to the public as to when we're going to go to each next step?
Yes, we can absolutely share that. It's a fairly detailed process. It is outlined in the City Code. The next step is for us to actually begin the negotiation process at the table, which occurs after the 1st of January. It's, the code actually says honor before January 5th. And so we actually will move forward with that process in January with the five meet and confer groups. And then we have until March 1st to reach an agreement before impasse is declared, and then the remainder of the process that I outlined ensues.
Thank you. At what point in the city or state code, because I don't know if it's a state code or a city code, so which one?
City code.
City code. At what point in the city code, obviously, people are providing public comment, but they can't provide public comment because an MOU has not been submitted. At what point do they submit the MOU so then there could be public comment?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, that actually should have happened last week. The groups chose not to submit actual MOUs and instead submitted those letters of intent. We will not actually have a draft MOU to present to the council until much later in the process, April or May timeframe, depending on when negotiations conclude at the table, to bring those contracts forward for your consideration.
So then, April or May, the public may be able to see the MOU?
That's correct.
So my anticipation is that once... So my anticipation is that once, I guess what, I guess where I'm a little confused about the April, May, at what point does the council see the MOU?
So Mayor, members of the council, the MOU comes back to you when it's ready for approval, or if, as I indicated before, there are points of contention between management and a particular group after fact-finding, then those will be presented to the council in advance of the final MOU being presented, and that occurs in April.
Okay, so then we don't see the final MOU until the end, but what I'm hearing is that there's points in the process that we will know about the MOU?
Yes, that's correct.
And at what point will the public know that?
So we'll be coming back to a public forum after the fact-finding process, when those final points are presented, or if everything has been resolved, then the final MOU will be presented at that point.
And when you say presented, will it be on our website? Where will it be so public can make comment?
It will be presented as part of the council agenda packet prior to the formal meeting where it will be considered for a vote.
Okay, so there's not a space where the public, or even staff, can go and read what is going to be presented at the MOU until the packet drops, which will be Thursday?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, we'll go on to item 50. Councilwoman Guardado, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, motion to approve item 50.
Second.
And I'll turn to Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to make a few comments about this item and the rest of the class and com items we will be seeing today. First and foremost, thank you to Asmi Local 2384 and their leadership for continuing to work with our human resources team to address the issue of wages and compensation for their members. Just a few days ago, we saw again that Phoenix leads the nation with the highest inflation reaching over 12%. As we go into 2023, it is extremely important that we continue to address the issues of wages and compensation for a city, our city, Phoenix employees. Our employees are our biggest asset. They worked through the pandemic, providing our residents with exceptional service and ensuring we continue to provide critical city services. To say it very bluntly, the city of Phoenix must pay more, which, with inflation over 12%, any increasing in the upcoming labor contracts that falls short of that number would be a pay cut. It is time for the city of Phoenix to lead on wages and compensation. It is crucial, given the year that we're going to be going into, and I'm hopeful that we will continue to lead as the fifth-largest city in the country. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Next is item 65, a Parks and Rec IGA, Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask for a motion to approve item 65.
Second.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. I would like to thank our Parks and Recs Department for bringing this item to us today. I've heard from countless parents throughout my district looking for safe and affordable places for their kids to get tutoring after school. I am so happy to see this partnership with ASU that will serve 33 packed sites through Phoenix, bringing mentors and tutors for our students. We all know that the pandemic hit our working-class children the hardest with them not being able to be in school and get the help that they need from their teachers, given that their parents are still working two or three jobs to be able to put food on the table. So this is a very exciting opportunity for all of us to making sure that we hopefully get our children to catch up. We know that there's a lot of our students that are still left behind from all of the, everything that they went through during COVID, so I'm very excited about this item. Special thanks to our director, Cynthia, who did so much work on this, and I'm very excited to be able to support this item.
Thank you so much for making this program such a priority. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastor.
Woo-hoo, yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Item 67, related to the donation of lock boxes, is an item that Councilwoman O'Brien has been working very hard on, so I'll turn to her for a motion.
I move to approve item 67, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll recognize Councilwoman O'Brien for comments.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by thanking the staff within the Fire Department for crafting a policy and program around an idea I brought them earlier this year. A member of my community mentioned similar programs running in Scottsdale and Chandler and wondered if it was possible to implement it here in Phoenix. Thanks to the partnership with the Phoenix Association of Realtors, this idea is now a reality. Members of the Public Justice and Safety Subcommittee received a brief rundown of the program this morning, and for the members of the public that didn't, this pilot program will install lock boxes to predetermined exterior locations on homes of senior citizens and special-needs adults who have applied through the Fire Department's website. That website will go live starting on January 1. The lock boxes will contain a key to the home, possible medical information such as allergies or conditions, and any access key cards needed. The code to the lock boxes will be archived within the 911 dispatch system and will be available to the public safety officials responding to emergency calls at the address. The intention of this program is to prevent forced entry into homes where the homeowner is incapacitated and unable to open the door in an emergency situation. As of now, our first responders have to break windows or knock doors down. This program will help to prevent damage to the home. To start, the Phoenix Association of Realtors has donated 100 lock boxes for the pilot program and has committed to partnering with us at full rollout of the program. I'm thankful for my district to serve as the testing ground for this pilot program and am confident it will be highly successful, as it has been in other municipalities. Thank you again to our Fire Department staff and our partners, the Phoenix Association of Realtors. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for your leadership in this area. Additional comments? Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Pastor.
Uh, yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Wonderful. Now we go to a bus-themed portion of this meeting, starting with item 74, and I'll turn to Councilwoman Ansari for a motion.
Move to approve item 74.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have members of the public to comment on this item. We'll begin with Joanna Struthers, in person, followed by Diane Brown virtual.
And Mayor, may I speak on 74 and 5, or should I defer my comments?
We'll recognize you for both items, which are related.
Appreciate that. Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and members of the council. My name is Joanna Struthers. I serve as the Senior Director of Advocacy for the American Lung Association. The American Lung Association is the leading organization working to save lives by improving lung health and preventing lung disease through research, education, and advocacy. As a leading public health organization, we are in support of both Agenda Items 74 and 75, which are critical measures to protect public health from harmful emissions from most polluting vehicles. Phoenix has some of the worst air quality in the country. The American Lung Association's 2022 State of the Air Report ranked Phoenix as the fifth most polluted for ozone, 11th in unhealthy particle pollution days, and eighth for most annual particle pollution levels. These dangerous levels of air and climate pollution exacerbate respiratory conditions and heart conditions, and is especially harmful to children, persons with asthma and COPD, and those with diabetes. Vehicle emissions are the largest contributing source to our air pollution burdens. The American Lung Association's Zeroing in Unhealthy Air Report revealed that the widespread transition to clean electricity and zero-emission cars and buses and trucks could avoid 38,000 asthma attacks and 15.1 billion in public health benefits between now and 2050, and that's just here in Arizona. Yesterday, the American Lung Association released a new poll, which revealed that for the third year in a row, Arizona voters are supportive of a transition away from fossil fuels. 80% of Arizona voters view air pollution as a serious problem, and to address these air and climate challenges, we need serious investments in zero-emission technologies. The majority of voters are supportive of cleaning up our air, of cleaning up our vehicle emissions, including medium and heavy-duty vehicles, which contribute to the heaviest doses of emissions, but make up the smallest percentage of vehicles on the road. We are grateful to see the city of Phoenix adopt the Transportation Electrification Plan earlier this year, and by approving 74 and 75 and transitioning our bus fleet to zero emissions to make these health benefits a reality before 2040 would be the goal of the American Lung Association, and we're happy to see these items on the agenda, and we support. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll recognize Diane either just for 74 or 74 and 75.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, Vice Mayor Pastor, members of the council. My name is Diane Brown. I'm the Executive Director of the Arizona Public Interest Research Group, Arizona Perg. Arizona Perg encourages you to vote in favor of items 74 and 75. I will also speak to these combined. We appreciate the continued work of staff and their related policy advancements for cleaner transportation options from this council. As you are aware, under the leadership of Councilwoman Ansari, the Phoenix EV roadmap was developed and adopted. The Phoenix EV roadmap begins with a path that focuses on equity, education, and outreach in leading by example. Agenda Items 74 and 75 continue Phoenix on this course. Over the last several years, Arizona Perg has released a series of reports noting the financial, air quality, and public health benefits of shifting to electric buses. Phoenix taxpayers will benefit by the city's adoption and implementation of a plan to transition to a cleaner transit system. Cleaner buses have lower lifetime maintenance and operating costs, and having a transition plan opens the door for more federal funds. Phoenix residents and visitors will also benefit by improved air quality and public health. Last year, 15 entities, including consumer, energy, faith, and health organizations, signed a letter to the city urging Phoenix to establish a goal of 100% electrified buses by 2030. While Arizona Perg would like to see the city move in this direction, we recognize roadblocks you are navigating and urge you to expedite the timeline as barriers are reduced. Passing Agenda Items 74 and 75 today helps steer the city forward, and we ask each of you to please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll turn now to Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. I could not be more thrilled with how far the city has come on this issue over the past year. Almost exactly a year ago, council was presented with a plan that would have locked us into five more years and up to $145 million in fossil-fuel-powered buses. Item 74 was entering us into a cooperative contract to help us order zero- and low-emission buses for the city of Phoenix, and this item, we are approving a plan that transitions us to 100% zero-emission bus fleet by 2040. This is the same timeline as New York City and as the state of California, and is one of the most ambitious in the United States. I agree with Diane. I do hope that we can reevaluate this plan on a regular basis. As technology improves, costs go down, and supply chains stabilize, we will absolutely be reviewing this plan and accelerating when we can. What this plan does is ensure that we will only be ordering hybrid and zero-emission buses after 2024, which will completely then end our dependence on fossil-fuel transit in terms of new purchases. I want to sincerely thank the community members and organizations that came out in full force a year ago to push our city to commit to clean transportation. This transition plan would definitely not be here without advocacy from groups like Arizona Perg, Sierra Club, SWEAP, American Lung Association, CHISP, and others. I also very much want to thank Mario Panigua, Jesus Sapien, Karen Peters, and all, and teams that were involved in working with us so closely over the last year to look at our broader EV roadmap, but with this transition plan in particular, looking at opportunities for innovation, looking at opportunities where we can get involved in cooperative contracts like the one that we agree to today to accelerate our transition. This will mean more clean jobs, improved air quality, less noise pollution, and a transit system that we can truly be proud of. This is a public health win, a quality-of-life win, a climate win, and a very big win for Phoenix. So thank you, and with that, I move to approve item 75.
Second.
So we, she just made a motion for 75, and she'd previously made one for 74, so we'll, we'll just take them separately, but I think other people may have comments, or I guess we can take them both together. Is everyone okay? All right, additional comments? I will join Councilwoman Ansari in thanking Mario and Jesus for their work on this item. We have a very unique system, 500 square miles, very long north-south routes. This takes a lot of technical expertise. The charging infrastructure, hydrogen are all complicated, and there's huge demand right now, so supply chain is not easy. I really appreciate you being thoughtful and trying to understand how we can make this work for Phoenix. We also have to work very closely with our utility partners, because it cannot be zero emission if the power going in is not zero emission, so we will work closely and know that there'll be transition fuels as well involved with that. I want to thank the U.S. government for the bipartisan infrastructure law, which provides 1.6 billion in funding to nearly double the number of clean transit buses on America's road, and particularly thank the FTA for the 16.3 million for greener buses and supporting infrastructure in Phoenix, Arizona. It'll be an exciting time, and we're going to learn a lot, and it could not come as a more important time. As mentioned in, by Joanna, we are a little challenged with ozone in this community, and it's great that we'll be doing our part. Unfortunately, Maricopa County was just downgraded on air quality, so we got to step up in a bigger way. Roll call.
Ansari.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Pastor.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
All right, our bus theme continues, this time with wages, and our Vice Mayor has been working hard on this, so I'll turn to her.
I move item number 76.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll turn to Councilwoman Ansari for comments.
Thank you. Just want to emphasize how incredible this is, and thank staff for moving so quickly on this. I know the Vice Mayor has been working on this, Councilwoman Guardado, and I also pushed earlier this fall on bus driver wages to improve recruitment and retention. I know when I've talked to Jesus about expanding routes in my district, especially in the Estrella region, the number one, the largest reason that was given to me of why we cannot expand routes as quickly as we'd like to is the bus driver shortage. So I hope that this goes a long way in helping us improve that and get, expand our bus access as much as possible across the city of Phoenix, bring back night access at some point, so thank you to staff for making this happen, and I'm excited to vote yes.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who worked very hard on this. Our Vice Mayor represents us at Valley Metro, so she's already voted for this in multiple capacities, and we'll turn to her, and then Councilwoman Guardado.
So I want to thank my colleagues who also assisted in this arena, because on the council, you can't do it by yourself. You have to have others that have voices and bring voices on an item, and then be able to join together and move an item. So I want to thank those that support this and have understood why it's needed. As stated, there is a bus shortage in drivers, but the wages were so low. If you, I wouldn't have known this if I hadn't been sitting as Chair of Valley Metro and looking at the system and on a regional capacity and seeing how low some of our wages were and where we, where Phoenix lied in the competitiveness and other arenas and, and the discussion with other cities representing on the Valley Metro were definitely saying we want to move. But as a large region and a large representative of Phoenix, we can't move without you, and so that's where the dialogue started and really pushed to make sure that we are competitive throughout our line and our buses. And so it was very important that staff understood the dynamics and the importance and be able then to show the data and statistics of how we needed bus drivers, because then we were also losing trips at a certain point. And it's just a, it's just a systematic piece that we all have to play in. So I just want to thank everybody for supporting this and urging this. I did vote earlier this month regarding the wages across the system on the region, and so I really appreciate the work that was done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Guardado.
Thank you, Mayor. When we talk about essential workers and we talk about frontline workers, our bus drivers were at the front of the line in the hype of COVID. Thankfully, thanks to our departments here, thanks to Jesus and Mario, we were able to put some shields on these buses to give a little bit of shield to these workers during the pandemic, but we knew that wages were still, were still lacking, and I just want to thank everyone that made this happen, to be able to better these wages. You know, I want to thank ETU, Bob Bean, Local 1430. You know, I want to thank ETU, Bob Bean, Local 1433 for all of the work that they did to also make sure that we were able to increase these wages. I want to thank Runover for being the liaison between labor and Transdev to making sure that everyone could come to a happy medium, to a place where we could actually hire more bus drivers, to a place where workers felt that they were coming into work with dignity and respect, and that our bus drivers were able to put up with a lot of things that they had to put up with and continue to put up with every time that they show up to work. But we know that we count on them to be able to move people from the east side of our city to the west side, to the north, to the south. They're critical for Phoenix to be able to thrive the way that Phoenix is thriving. So, I just want to thank everyone for all of their hard work, and there's still a lot of more work that needs to be done with inflation rates, with everything that's happening in our city, and everything that's happening throughout the country. I'm just glad that we've been able to establish these type of relationships so we can continue to look out for our frontline workers throughout the city of Phoenix, and I am very happy to be able to support this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. This item is related to Transdev, and we previously on the consent agenda approved market rate adjustments for our contracts with First Transit and MV Transportation. Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yeah.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Pastor?
Woo-hoo!
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Item 83 is shared micromobility revenue contract solicitation request for award. Do we have a motion?
Move item number 83.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have four public comments. We will begin with Cindy, followed by Sean.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and members of the council. My name is Cindy Bonnet, and I serve as the Senior Director of Phoenix Community Alliance. And I speak today on behalf of our Board of Directors and all of our members. We are excited about the shared micromobility program becoming permanent and for the associated revenue contract solicitation request for award. The expanded boundaries and the scope to include much-desired traditional pedal bikes, which we all want, I think more people want it than we'll admit, e-bikes, adaptive vehicles, and an increased fleet cap are what Phoenix needs now. Additionally, we are grateful that two PCA members were selected as vendors. However, we did have hopes of a third PCA member, Bird, also being recommended for the award, and we ask that this be a consideration for the future. PCA does appreciate and respect the process exercised by the selection panel. In addition, we look forward to the future and possibility of expanding the boundaries at some time. If I recall correctly, I believe there was some support in District 5. We support the measures of the shared micromobility program and the other provision, and we respectfully ask that you support it and award the contracts as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sean is next, followed by Kylie.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and members of the city council. My name is Sean Ayes, and I'm a representative of Bird Rides, Inc. The future program was designed for two to three micromobility operators, and the current program has worked well with four. But the city of Phoenix has opted to select just two operators to provide services over the next five years. We believe selecting two operators risks the long-term viability of micromobility in Phoenix and respectfully ask the city to reconsider and allow three operators. We bring three items for your consideration today. One, account for changes in the industry. We don't know what the future will bring in Phoenix. As the city experienced with grid bikes, there is uncertainty in this industry as shared mobility providers go bankrupt or pull out of market. With only two operators, if one drops out, the resources and time required for an alternate operator to join the program allows for the remaining operator to have a monopoly. A third operator ensures that come what may, Phoenicians will have access to shared electric transportation. Two, foster competition. Additional competition creates benefits for Phoenix residents and visitors, greater choice, greater geographic coverage, and a greater pool of technological innovation. Competition will also help achieve the city's equity goals. 30% equity zone deployment requirements in the new program mean that if selected operators do not operate at or near their 3,000-vehicle cap, that there will be less vehicles available in key opportunity zones. Three, improve compliance and accountability. The city's new set of regulations are complex and require significant resources in order to comply. With three operators, if one operator cannot comply and has its contract terminated, the city is still left with multiple compliant operators. In fact, we respectfully propose that the city conduct quarterly check-ins on the status, level of compliance, and performance of the operators. This will allow the city to adjust the program to meet its goals. Thank you again for your time and consideration. We respectfully ask the city to move forward with a three-operator program and include Bird. But regardless of the final decision, please know that Bird will continue to be a resource and active partner for Phoenix in the years to come.
Vice Mayor.
I believe we have another.
I'm sorry, I thought you had a question for him.
No, I jumped ahead.
We have Kylie next, followed by Kevin Olson, I believe in person. Kylie virtual.
Morning, or good afternoon, I guess. Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kylie Floodmott, and I'm a representative of Bird Rides, Inc. As was mentioned yesterday during the EDE subcommittee meeting, in order to support the current operating area in downtown Phoenix, this council voted earlier this year to expand the existing micromobility pilot to include additional shared mobility providers. The current program started with just two providers and now has four due to the direction of this council. In designing the future micromobility program, the city has the option to select two or three providers to support a five-year shared active mobility program covering a significantly expanded operating zone. However, the city has elected to move forward with just two providers to operate a significantly larger geographic program area than the current pilot. The residents and visitors of Phoenix have embraced micromobility and strongly adopted affordable and accessible transportation, as evidenced by the current program expansion. Electing three operators ensures that Phoenicians always have access to shared micromobility, and that access is not disrupted by any potential changes in the program or providers in the next five years. Bird is dedicated to the city of Phoenix and passionate about the future of micromobility in the valley. As evidenced in our proposal, Bird is fully committed alongside the other two operators to supporting a full-vehicle fleet mix as desired by the city and continuing to provide accessible transportation to Phoenicians that need it most. With that, we respectfully ask the city to move forward with a three-operator program inclusive of Bird. Regardless, we look forward to continuing to be a resource for the city of Phoenix. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Kevin is next, followed by Michael.
My name is Kevin Olson. I am currently running a small business as a Bird fleet manager in Phoenix. As you're aware, the city of Phoenix has decided to choose only two operators for the micromobility program, meaning my business being at risk. So, while I'm here asking the council to reconsider allowing a third operator, which only provides more transportation options for the residents and visitors of Phoenix, I'd also like to share why Bird is one of the best operators to provide the most successful program for the city. Bird's fleet manager program is unique in that they partner with us to run our business opposed to being an hourly employee. This means that the success and integrity of my business depends on how well we manage our fleet and vehicles. Running on-the-ground operations of the micromobility program has allowed us to truly make an impact in providing local Phoenicians access to transportation while also becoming an entrepreneur. Bird is the only one of providers that offers this opportunity, and by making this choice to eliminate Bird, the city puts my business in jeopardy. Because the FM program, it creates local small businesses for Phoenicians, excuse me, for Phoenicians that have a true vested interest in its success. Members of the council, I urge you to see the value in having three operators who can ensure the city has the best chance of providing transportation to those who need it most. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Michael.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Michael, and I'm currently working as an entrepreneur and operate my local logistic company as a fleet manager with Bird. I'm here today because the city of Phoenix is making a recommendation to award micromobility providers a contract to operate for five years under its shared micromobility program. The city was able to award two to three operators, but has chosen to go with two, and Bird is not included. Bird's fleet manager program has been life-changing for so many people, including myself. For the past two years, this program provided myself and other local Phoenicians the opportunity to be self-employed business owners and give employment opportunities to other citizens of our community. I am passionate and dedicated about micromobility and being a moving force in providing transportations to all Phoenicians, especially those that need it the most. Over the past two years, my fellow fleet managers and I, along with our employees, have truly committed to Phoenix's micromobility program. We are locals. We understand the needs of the city, and because of the unique way in which Bird partners with us fleet managers, our success and livelihoods are directly a result of how efficient and effective we run our operations and how many rides we get. Therefore, every day, we are making sure our vehicles are clean, sanitary, ensure safety and quality, stay in compliance with city regulations, and consistently make sure our vehicles are appropriately staged and not allowing them to become a nuisance within the community. We are not paid minimally as hourly workers, and so the care for our maintenance of the program reflects that. We are more than happy to go above and beyond for the city of Phoenix's micromobility program. I am not sure why the city decided to not include a third operator, even though that was a part of their initial proposal. Not doing so will put my ability to support my family at risk, as the current Phoenix market is approximately 40% of my revenue. I truly believe adding a third operator would be beneficial for the Phoenix micromobility program because this is a city populated with well over a million people and maintains a strong surge of tourism throughout the year. By having more options available for riders, we can more effectively service our community as a whole. I strongly encourage you to vote to include a third operator in the micromobility program in Phoenix and continue to support local small businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public testimony. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor.
So, yesterday at our subcommittee meeting, we heard this item, and there were several pieces that we discussed. And so, I have several questions for staff. One was, yesterday, we asked if the RFP had the ability to add another company.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, because the RFP included language for two to three potential vendors, we confirmed with the Law Department that we would be allowed, even if we started with just the two, or even at this point, we would be allowed to add a third vendor potentially. But we'd like to outline some additional conditions that staff would recommend if we were to do that.
Okay. Because what I had heard from one of the speakers was definitely if one of the companies fell through or didn't meet our standards, then there would only be one company, and they would monopolize. So, I'm going to their second point of them talking about competition, because I think it is, we live in a capitalist country, and competition is competition, and that's what they push for us, right? You know, competition is good. So, I think we do have to relook and look at that. But the other thing was, they stated compliance, and so I am all about compliance because I was probably, I'm probably the one councilperson that kind of drags my feet in micromobility because of compliance and because of people following what we have written and done. And one of the pieces that I would like to understand is what is considered a full fleet for Phoenix?
I'm going to hand this off to Street Transportation Director Keeney Knutson to talk about what we think of as a full fleet mix for the micromobility program, and he can also get into some of the concerns that we had with recommending just the two vendors at this point based on the proposal that Bird submitted. So, that's another element that Keeney can explain as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, I think the first thing that was most important to us as we expanded this program from an e-scooter program to a micromobility program with more additional vehicles was first was to look at continuing the e-scooter program. We also heard a lot of concern and requests for e-bikes, so electric bikes as well. We also had, as one of the speakers Cindy had talked about, the pedal bike technology as well. So, those were the initial vehicles we were looking at for, looking for, but also we were looking and interested for offerings that the vendors might have that would be for people who have mobility challenges or persons with disabilities. And when we look at the two vendors that we are proposing to or recommending for award, both Spin and Lime, they proposed all of those vehicles and different variations of those vehicles, and so they provided full fleet mixes each for those vendors. Now, Bird, on the other hand, did not provide all of those vehicle options. They provided only e-scooter and e-bike options as part of their offering and their proposal.
So, I would just like to, I guess, may I suggest that possibly we look within the next six months, because we did discuss this in our subcommittee, of working with Bird to see, or whatever other vendor there is, because I don't know if there's another one, but to working with the community or the companies to be able to see if we can expand our vendor opportunities.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council, as pointed out in your subcommittee, I think that was the one takeaway as well yesterday from the conversation yesterday was the idea that we need to, there's a lot of different changes with this new micromobility program, how we secure and lock the devices at the end of the day, the additional devices, the additional operating areas, and I think we want to be able to test out, evaluate those with the new program. And then, as we have success with that, we would like to be able to come back in here. I think what we talked about yesterday was six months, to be able to talk about how effective the program is, and then we can start talking about potential expansion of the program beyond the boundaries, new operating boundaries that we're going to be using with this new micromobility program. So, I think that's a great suggestion.
And Mayor and Vice Mayor, that would be the opportunity potentially to add the third vendor as we look to expand the program when we do the six-month review.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the focus on adaptive vehicles. The city of Phoenix has been recognized as a community that is friendly to people with all mobility preferences, and so appreciate the leadership in that area. As we do our six-month review, I think it should not just be focused on vendors, but also what is the technology that's available. Our electrification plan did talk about not just cars, but micromobility, and there's now been advances in public infrastructure to support privately-owned vehicles doing charging, so we want to just continue to understand what is available and what works, not just the vendor list, but what would our community like to see. Also, really appreciate that we've included, I guess we now call them pedal bicycles. I used to just think of them as bicycles, but there was significant interest in this community and in having a public option for that, and with the great investments we are making in our bicycle master plan, that fits in beautifully as well. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Ansari?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Woo-hoo! Woo-hoo!
We have a happy Vice Mayor. That concludes the agendized portion of our meeting, and I'll turn to our city attorney to introduce the final portion.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes.
Thank you so much. Let's see, Ana Hernandez. Not here. Kim Baker, followed by Gustavo Berber.
I do have a petition for you all again. Not the same petition, but... And before I start, I do want to say thank you to Mike for the assistance that he gave at the last council meeting when Ms. Scott had a medical condition out on the corner. Thank you, sir. Mayor and council, I am asking, requesting that you all, excuse me, have the city manager to investigate and see if Chief Michael Sullivan and former police officer Patrick Sullivan are related. Who is Patrick Sullivan? Patrick Sullivan shot and killed an African-American man on 20th Street and Southern. Patrick Sullivan shot and killed an African-American man on 20th Street and Southern in 2010. 2011, he began his pursuit after me. 2012, he followed suit. After filing formal charges, he resigned. I would really like to know if these two are related in any way, shape, form, or fashion. There are some other items on here. I would definitely love those addressed. Number two, why was Patrick Sullivan meeting with Lieutenant Scott Smith of the Tempe Police Department shortly after that? He's calling me by name, trying to pull me over. Very concerning. Anyway, the final one, the rest can be addressed by the city manager. The final one is this. The public is admonished by the city attorney to respect and appropriately address you all, in which, in most cases, what I've heard, it's followed. That admonishment should come also for the council and mayor. Mr. DeCiccio called either me or someone else in the last October 12 meeting "an idiot", and not one on that council addressed it publicly. Now, had I spoken that to somebody here, I would probably be stopped and talked to. If you're going to tolerate that type of behavior, Mayor, from council members, how dare you address or even have your police officers address a citizen who may even feel those sentiments? That pendulum needs to swing both ways. Not a council member, elected official, should, from that sacred seat, refer to anyone as an idiot. I'm far from an idiot. So if he was addressing me, that needs to be corrected publicly. If he was addressing someone else, that needs to be corrected publicly. Or you all agree with his sentiment. Thank you all.
Gustavo Proxima, Beatrice Montez.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gustavo. I'm living on 1909 West Baca Row. It's Phoenix. It's between 18th Avenue and 19th Avenue. It's between this. This trailer is for a long time over there, and I live in over there for a long time too, but this trailer is very, very old. We can move. We can move this trailer. I don't know what I do. And I want to note you are... We needed your help, because they say, hey, you have the last day on 28th February the next year. We have only a couple days for move there, and I don't know what I do. And all these diverse families is the same problem. And I want to tell you, we needed your help. I know you can help. I waiting for you help. Thank you very much.
Beatrice, followed by Carmen.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Beatrice.
My name is Beatrice.
Estoy aquí. Vengo del Weldon Court. Estamos pidiendo apoyo con un tiempo suficiente para buscar ubicación. También pedimos indemnización por nuestras casas móviles. Y este...
And I'm here, I live at Weldon Court, and I'm here to ask for support, to give us enough time so that we can look for another place, and we're also asking for compensation for our mobile homes.
Esperamos una respuesta del mayor. No hemos tenido solución aún. Este, solo contamos con el apoyo de Laura Pastor. Gracias.
And so, we are expecting an answer. We haven't found a solution yet, and the only support that we've been having is from Laura Pastor. Thank you.
Carmen, followed by Salvador.
Hello, my name is Carmen Prieto. I am also from Weldon Court. We had some hope, we had some help from the legal aid and from the Campaña de los Pobres. I hope this has put in the agenda, because there's collision, and I really want to thank Laura Pastor, she really did wonderful things this meeting we had. Were able to get some lawyers. Hopefully, action will be taken. I hope that, also, because it was said last time, that it was going to be talked with the mayor in the meeting. In the meeting, we want to know when, we want to know what's going to happen, because we want to be involved with it too, because it's really important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will send an email to the folks who have emails or call the people who do not with meeting schedule. Salvador, followed by Alondra.
Good afternoon, councilpeople, councilmembers, mayor. We've been coming here since August, September, October, November, it's been about four or five months, and we have constantly been asking for it to be put on the agenda, on the formal agenda, because the side meetings, they're nice, but they don't really resolve anything, because there's no votes, there's nothing, just a lot of talk. And time is running out. Some people have until February, some people have until April 1st, some people have May 1st, some people have May 28th. Time is running out, and, you know, the residents appreciate whatever help has been coming, and, you know, on behalf of the IDA for Las Casitas, on behalf of, you know, Community Legal Services, they appreciate all that help. However, that's not going to resolve the situation of displacement. And the city has to seriously look at the displacement situation. And from what I see, they're not serious about it. They're not serious about it. The only solution that is possible is when you actually declare a mobile home zoning, which you have the legality to do it. It's in the, it's the precedent on the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And you can actually allow the mobile homeowners to actually ask for rezoning whenever they want to, yet that's never brought up. It's never been on the interest either of the developers, or the city staff, or the city council to do it. That's why we need to actually have it on the formal agenda, so we can bring our experts to counter your experts, so that you can actually resolve the situation, because this is just the beginning. You talk to the Mobile Homeowners Association, they say, hey, this is the beginning, we're about to just... And, you know, they're for it, because they're going to profit out of it. So if this meeting is not done by January, then to us, it tells us that you're not really interested in helping the community. Thank you very much.
Alondra, followed by virtual Eric Haxstrom.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Alonda Ruiz, from Perry Rink Mobile Home Park, right beside, where Grand Canyon University is still displacing us, and we don't have options. There's times when we've been seeking where to go, and there's no options out there for us. We need your help. We don't know what resources to seek, because we feel like we've just been looking for all of them, and none of them have good solutions for us. So this is my seventh time here, and I really hope that we can get some answers from you. I have faith that we can get some answers from you. I don't know where else to turn, who else to turn to, but I do trust that we can get help from the city, and I look forward to it. And I've been praying for answers from here, and I've been, as God says, pray for your enemies. I have also been praying for GCU, and I'm just hoping for a miracle at this time. Otherwise, myself and 45 other families from my community will be homeless come May 28th, and the other families from the other parks will also be homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric is next, followed by Jennifer, also virtual.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. My name is Eric Haxstrom. I'm in District 5. We're seeking the council's help in addressing a street flooding problem. The problem that we have is there are approximately 50 acres that divert water to a storm drain that cannot handle that volume. The street floods with several inches of water and even light rain, and the flooding goes onto our property and to our house. There are multiple times per year that the flooding has reached the house, seeping into the foundation, absorbing into the walls, which will cause damage to the foundation, the walls, the flooring, and sprout mold. What we've done so far is we've contacted street maintenance to clean the storm channel, and even after a recent cleaning, the street still flooded. So it's obvious that maintenance alone is not going to address the issue. It's that the drain is simply not fit to handle the amount of volume that it receives. We've asked the city to send a civil engineer to come assess the situation, for which we've received a report, but we're told it will be filed, but unlikely any action is going to happen. The engineer said that they don't have the tools to model out the storm runoff, when a simple calculation can provide a rough estimate with no special tools. An estimate would prove that the 12-inch drain isn't suitable for the job. The city has records, reported issues with the storm drain going back 10 years, but no action has been taken to address this. So what we are asking for is we're requesting the city to perform an assessment and come up with a solution. We're relying on the city to fix this issue. As homeowners, if we build up a wall, that's only going to be a Band-Aid to the problem, and it's going to cause issues for our immediate neighbors who also suffer from flooding issues. There is solutions that the city can explore, and we need to pull the right levers to have the city review. I do believe that there's a relatively simple solution, and need the influence of the council to help rectify this. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. And I just spoke with your councilwoman, and we will work with Maricopa County Flood Control and ask our team to follow up. Jennifer is next, followed by Sylvia.
Hi, city council, mayor, vice mayor. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak on this critical problem that we have brought forward to the agenda for public comment. My name is Jennifer Leon Haxstrom, and I live on District 5 as well. I am also here representing Patricia Hoyt, our neighbor on 6605 North 11th Avenue and Du Van Trong at 1111 West Kentucky Lane. Both of our surrounding neighbors have been presented with the same issue and a problem from the flooding storm drain that does not have sufficient support for the street on 11th Avenue. So I appreciate you guys putting attention to this matter and helping us come up with a solution for allowing 11th Avenue to be okay on the flooding situation when rain does come. I'd like to add also a little bit of history on the drainage. As Mr. Haxstrom did mention, 10 years ago, this problem did come, presented to the city, but then also within the last three months, we've had the same problem reoccur after storm drain issues have caused. I apologize for the background noise, I do have my son with me at this moment. But yes, I do appreciate the attention to this matter and hope that a solution can be brought forth for the residents of this neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker today will be Sylvia.
First, I'd like to acknowledge indigenous ancestors that guide us today and give us strength to address this issue. We have been coming to council for months and months to request that the city address the displacement of low-income residents from mobile home parks. The city responds, offer programs and services to residents, but that does not address the problem. The displacement will continue and continue unless the city addresses the root of displacement. Right now, mobile home parks are seen as the desired development properties, and this is an urgent matter that requires your leadership by taking steps to protect affordable housing such as mobile home parks. Right now, the city is building affordable housing and at the same time is allowing the elimination of the only affordable housing available. Look for solutions for this involuntary relocation of low-income residents from the city of Phoenix. You must address this problem holistically and look at the overall impact that it's having, not only on the city, but school districts and small businesses and neighborhoods that are being destroyed by this displacement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes today's meeting. We are adjourned.
He mentioned how great it is to have luggage, since for the years in foster care, he used to have to use or take a black bag. So today, the holidays, we are asking people to donate luggage, clothing, and toys for kids aged eight through 18. There is no one we would rather partner with for this event, for this event at the Renaissance Phoenix Downtown Hotel.